All stand for the pledge, please. All right, this meeting, you know, we brought to, brought up to go over the finalizing of any budget questions and tax levies that we wanted to discuss. I know we started doing it at our last meeting and it got kind of messy. So I think today, we're going to kind of go down. I printed up that budget hearing notes document, which had a kind of a list out of requested employees, diapers, part-time, new cars, requested wage adjustments and big expenditures. So I think we'll kind of walk down through that. Uh, I think we will start with the, with the HR, because that's something that has been quite a discussion, and I think we need to get that kind of resolved so we know, have some better ideas of thoughts on the other things that are coming up. I'm going to let woman, Sheila, speak on the.
Okay, so I've got a, this one is about, uh, people going around and emailing about who you should talk to. So I reached out to Cass County and I reached out to White County. So the email on the top is from the guy from Cass County, Jeremy Hall. He's been the HR director for Cass County for 10 years. He's the only person that sat in that department. As you can see, he goes on to talk about, I'm going to give you guys a second to read that. You guys want me to read it out loud, too? Okay, so on a day-to-day basis, there's no given day that's the same. In a typical week, I will have scheduled meetings with new hires. I do all the new hire paperwork and get them enrolled in perf and deliver the info to payroll so they can be put into the system. I also work with IT to get new hires' computer access, email, KIC access. I also handle all employee resignations, terminations. I make sure the proper notice has been given, ensure they are paid out for their personal time per the handbook, and terminate their perf and insurance coverage in the system with all of our providers. I have quarterly meetings with department heads. In those meetings, we talk about HR issues that we are currently facing or that we need to have a refresher course on. Those topics include MF, MFLA, workers' comp, time away from work, discipline, et cetera. I handle reports to insurance companies, ACA compliance. Majority of my job is not scheduled. I can have only one or two meetings scheduled, but my day will end up being full with the issues that come through my office all the time. For example, I handle all insurance questions for all employees, roughly 225 employees. We discuss their coverage, questions on billing, updates, changes, et cetera. All FMLA requests go through my office, so I work with department heads and employees to get the proper paperwork to approve a leave. Once a leave is approved, I keep track of the time used on spreadsheets and work with the employee and department head to get them back to work or adjust leave if needed. All workers' comp claims go through my office. I make sure work, I make sure paperwork is completed, completed properly. I send the paperwork to our provider to start the claim. I follow up with treatment at our local occupational health facility. I work with department heads for any leave or restrictions that need accommodated. If a department head has a, has a discipline issue or a payroll, hold on, if a department head has a dis- discipline issue or payroll issue, or payroll has a question about a service record that was turned in that may not be correct, I assist with those questions as well. No day is the same, but there are several days where I may be working on eight to 10 projects at once. Not to mention the hours I spend researching and training HR rules and laws and constantly, that are constantly evolving. And if you don't have that designated person to keep track of that updates, your county could fall behind. Hiring process, I'm in charge of advertising all open positions and accepting applications. Once I receive an application for a department, I forward that onto the hiring manager or department head for their review. They handle interviewing and making employment offers to candidates. Once an offer is made, the department head will notify me and I begin the hiring process. I reach out to the candidate that's, and schedule a meeting time that is convenient for both of us. I work with the local OCC Health to schedule a year analysis drug screen. Once they have completed the drug screen, they report right to my office to complete paperwork, payroll, perf, insurance. We then do local background check with the sheriff's department. Once an office is made, I can usually have everything completed for the new hire within two to three days at the latest. Depending on schedule, sometimes faster. I am always available to new hires and department heads at all times with any questions. I don't follow up on a regular basis to check in and I don't micromanage, but we do have department heads fill out a 90-day review to see how things are going and to see if there are any issues that need addressed. Issues, if a department had, has a discipline issue in their office, they usually reach out to me to explain the situation and we discuss it together and review the handbook policies together. I will then make a recommendation of the proper discipline to be handed down. Once we are in agreement, the department head will issue the punishment and give me documentation to keep in the personnel file that I maintain. I also have employees that come to my office to talk about issues they are having with supervisors or coworkers. If there's an investigation to be done due to the issue, I'm in charge of leading, leading that investigation and work directly with our county attorney if needed. In the first paragraph, I explained that I handle all FMLA requests and workers' comp claims. That all goes through my office and I am in charge of making sure everything is done in the time that is required by law. And I track leaves and claims from start to finish. All terminations, resignations go through my office. I'm usually consulted before a termination is made because more often than not, it's due to discipline. Once I receive notice of resignation, I make sure all policies were followed and handle payout of personnel time, comp time per handbook. I also handle termination of insurance benefits and perf. Everything you had questions through my office, everything you have questions on goes through my office. That way, it is always done the same way every time and everyone is treated the same way per the handbook to avoid possible litigation. I hope this helps in your quest to get a new HR director. A central office where all HR-related questions can be answered frees up other departments from only 50% of their time or less to HR-related issues that can focus on their main jobs. So that was from the Cass County director. And I also reached out to White County. They have two people in their office. They have a director, well, like a coordinator, and then somebody that helps with payroll and insurance. And they also have roughly 200-ish employees. So I know that you guys all wanted more info, so there's your more info.
Cass County's got 366 total between part-time and full-time.
Okay. He said he's the lowest paid person in the entire state for HR. Uh, he, that's just what he told me. He said for his position, he's the lowest paid person in the state. So it's not just an HR person?
And there's only 115 employees in Brown County with a population of 15,000. So what I did was look at comparisons of county size as to what we're trying to do here. There's 37,000 people in Cass County. And there are other counties that are looking into, uh, it's called ML Talent out of Indy. It's, it's, uh, they're a part-time consultant. It's costing them $100,000 a year to participate in that. So basically outsourcing to HR.
Okay, I went on to the next part. Um, I went through our published budget. I took all our full-time employees, not our part-time employees, came up with a total of our payroll, which you can see on that paper, and which was included with our 5% increase. If we only did a 3% increase on wages, you'd save roughly $90,845, which would fund up the HR salary. You go to the next page. Originally, we asked for an HR director. After talking to Cass County and White County, I think we're more suited for an HR coordinator, which would bring the wage down in the matrix to $59,168. I also updated the budget. So the actual budget for HR could be brought down, but I know. So the total budget for HR would be roughly 146,000. And including in that $146,000 would be moving a payroll deputy out of the auditor's office and into the HR department. So the reality of it is you would take another 100, or another 40, roughly $45,000 out of auditor's budget and move it into HR budget, which would make the HR budget roughly $100,000. So I obtained the information you asked for. I also figured out a way to fund it.
Well, appreciate the information. I guess, what other questions? Or opinions or ideas or thoughts that everybody have?
Well, the first thing I guess that popped into my mind is we're still 1.7 million over budget, correct? And, um, I, I'm not against an HR person. I guess I'm just against it right now. I don't know why we can't wait a year and see where some of this money settles out and make sure that we're a little closer to where we want to be on that budget. I understand that surplus, there was, this, this ran out, that was what, 2 million? Last time we oversold it, one time it was four and then it dropped down. Do you know where it is now?
I think the surplus that's sitting, but rolled over in 2023 was like $400,000.
And we haven't seen any of that, walking into that without this budget.
But it just depends on where the $200,000 budget reaches out, yes.
So, um, and then I think we still have, I still haven't had a, what I thought was a good answer to the, the employees pay you that we just, you know, I know you and I talked about a little bit on the phone and figured that still, we're going to come up with a couple hundred thousand when the ARPA money runs out for the pay raises that the sheriffs, I assume it's still just the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I, like I said, I'm not against the HR. I appreciate all the work that both of you have done for it, but I'm just not comfortable with dropping another 100,000 in a whole budget this quick. I think we should wait a year and see how this plays out with our next year's budget. And then we're still good to go and I don't have any problem with it. That's what I said.
I appreciate it.
What happens if? I'm just going to be quiet.
So as a, as a previous department head, I, I never had any troubles as long as the department heads all of them were in. And as far as for discipline, and the auditor's office always took care of the health insurance and the entrance and the exit meetings for pre-screening. And it always flowed pretty good. I don't know about you, Jeff, did it work for you too?
We had the same issues. I, you know, we, uh, when we first come into office, Kevin set down, we went through that stuff, that handbook. It was one of the best things this county's ever done for part of the employees, I think. And, uh, you know, once you sit through a couple of those things, then you're pretty much good yourself. I mean, there was, there were some hiccups there once in a while. You know, I, 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 I got to talk to Kevin personally about, you know, what he did for other department heads. And he was really good at all the time. And, uh, but, uh, you know, we went this far without one, another year difference going to make as far as trying to see how this settles out. And we got $12 million on courthouse that we're just going to have to pay for. So, you know, let's, let's just let it settle. To me, I just want to let it settle for a year that things look fine and I'm not having trouble with HR personally. There's some benefits to it. You know, we had to do, there's some sexual harassment training and stuff that should be done, but I think Kevin Dunn, when I was sheriff, I remember he was doing some of those. We did them in-house at the sheriff's office. We had a policy that we paid for that, that that training employees could do it all on the computers and they got it. Uh, there's some training that should be done, you know, yearly, that you can check that box off and kind of save some of them.
What happens if we don't have our county?
If we don't have one, we'll hire another.
Right, but most county, but most county attorneys don't do HR. They do contracts, advises legally.
So then, I guess that's, you know, who would invest in that? But the, the problem is that I think that we've got some financial things that we need to buy something. Let's see where we're at and, uh, you know, what we'd do next year if that's unfindable for the HR person. But just to come up and throw it in there last minute, I don't think that's the way to do business. Like I said, I appreciate what you've done, but this is a guy that's justifying his job as far as I can see. And every HR person you go to, you're going to say the same thing. You're going to say, oh, it's the best thing going. The county's got a ball with 119 years without it so far. I don't know that we're going to ruin employees or the county if we don't, if we just wait. So that's what I meant. And I'm going to go first, I mean, everybody else here, Jeff's senior.
Yeah, I, I, I guess just a couple of points that I want to point out. Like I say, I have one of the conversations I had with Jeff yesterday and others. I, most people know that I'm not quick to want to spend money or to allocate money, like future revenue that may be coming in from certain projects. I'm not quick to allocate that money toward, toward paying for the cost of doing, of running the county or that projects, courthouse payments, things that makes, so we don't, we don't spend money that we don't have or that we don't know that we're going to have every day. We don't, hopefully, we're not doing that at home in our budget, spending money that we don't assume we'll have every day. The only thing that, a couple of, so I guess saying that, I understand Jeff's concerns and other people's concerns, you know, on that. I also know that sometimes we have to make changes. And I, I listen to, you know, our county attorney. I've listened to others speak of, you know, the, making sure that we are going down the same road when it comes to making sure that all of our documentation is handled the same way, making sure. And I know I asked our county attorney to give me some kind of idea of how much I spent on HR-related issues. Said it's very difficult because it's a lot of conversations, but not, you know, not things that were necessarily always billed and stuff. But they, they said there was a fair amount of time. And I know as representing us in the HR, we'll call it the HR field, they are ones that are very much, uh, in favor of having somebody do that, they believe. For the county, it's something that will benefit the county, benefit the employees, benefit all the department. Free up time for them to be able to do the things they were elected or appointed to do and all. So saying that, you know, I know, uh, timing is important. I think it's something, though, that, that would benefit the county, myself. I know that, you know, there's other things that's, that we're concerned with. But I just, I, I think there's, but, you know, part of it is there's going to be a lot of changes coming ahead, trying to be proactive and help protect our department heads, elected officials, county employees for the future.
Can I make a motion to not fund the HR this year?
Right, we have a motion to not fund the HR this year.
Laura, you have another number that I asked for.
I, I did print out already four, however. The problem is the stuff, what you ask for, I can't give them now. I have to do a lot of work, so if I start doing these numbers, they're not going to be accurate. I tried to give you the rollover number.
Abby, help.
So going back to 2016, this is rollover from the budget amounts, not from the residuals that actual money in the account, it's just rollover from the budget itself. In 2016, it was 535,000. In 2017, it was 1.277. That's million. 2018, it was 243,000. 2019, it was a million 75. 2020, it was a million 150. 2021, it was 752,000. 2022, it was 708,000. 2023, it was 868,000. Now that's money, that's, that's, that's just what was budgeted, what was rolled over from, left over from the budget. Uh, budgeted and not, that's not the residual natural money. So, you know, what you gather from that is, I'm not sure.
I got something to say, you know, they're handling this HR person. Couple of years ago, if there's a lawsuit, if they, if they prepare a lawsuit, most likely that more than 30, 20 years, they'll be there.
I, I would agree. You know, that's one of the things we did when we did the handbook and things like that. At the time, we spent money to have the handbook done, especially at the time, it was, it was a lot of money to hire the company to come in. But we did it because it was, you know, and it costs a lot more than 100,000. And it was to try and be proactive and, you know, keep us from not getting into litigation stuff. You know, I don't have people calling me saying that it's not a good budget, it didn't work out to the benefit of the counties. Sometimes we have to do things proactive to be able to get ahead. One thing that I would also, you know, when we talk about the money and all, is the fact that, you know, if we're, you know, paying a county attorney 250-ish dollars an hour, you're not paying somebody at house $250 an hour to cover that cost. You take that work away from your county attorney, how much of that 100,000 now gets reduced to 50,000?
How much litigation have we had with an employee who confessed to the private agency?
Not a lot, but there has been some. They've had to go to, uh, unemployment claims, you know, and, and not only the litigation, but just the, you know, when I look at the cost, it comes to the time spent on preparing paperwork and stuff that has to be sent, that can be repaired by somebody at a cheaper rate.
Department heads doing their job and they're, they're running through, uh, another six months and giving an employee an evaluation. And that goes in their file. How I did it, it took three write-ups before you could terminate them. And if you had all that documented and they contested it with the unemployment agency, they couldn't get it because you had your vets in route.
And that's, and that's the important part. And if, if everybody's doing it the same way, then it works.
So the commissioners should be in charge of the department heads and making sure that they're doing what we're supposed to do.
And can I, Sheriff, some thought, because I think Brad does make a good point there. One of the things that I think you have to remember on that point, because you're right about a lot of the department heads, is that several of our department heads, including one of our department heads with the largest workforces, are not subject to the commissioners. And so even if they are not doing their job and the commissioners don't have that accountable, at least when it gets to that point of processing the unemployment paperwork, we do have somebody focused on that. And the other relevant point, I think, and I, I appreciate the financial concerns. I had to ask the White County auditor something entirely different. And I just brought this up to her because the night before I had seen, uh, one of their commissioners in a meeting. And she pointed out that one of the reasons White County took all of the HR, um, function out of the auditor's office and created its own department was just the simple, for the sake of confidentiality. You've got a department that is doing all sorts of things across the board, is handling finances, and then has somebody reporting to that person handling HR. That's not to say that the person you're going to hire in the auditor's office is going to be a problem, but you're mitigating some of the risk with highly confidential documentation. And also, quite frankly, getting back to the point of all these department heads who are elected, if you have somebody in the HR or payroll function who isn't getting the job done, and I'm not speaking about Laura or Teresa in specific, but in general, if they're not getting that job done, if this is a person appointed by the commissioners, we've got that accountability to discipline the HR director, to terminate the HR director, that the commissioners do not have when all of those functions are being done under the auspices of someone who has almost no accountability to the Board of Commissioners. I mean, this is a problem, like inherent in Indiana's constitution, that we have so many elected department heads where we don't have that accountability to the Board of Commissioners. I don't understand as a standard practice why we wouldn't make as many of them accountable to the commissioners, as many functions as we possibly can or another, whether it's me to the CDC or health staff to the Board of Health. I don't know why, if given the opportunity, we wouldn't make as many functions as possible accountable to the county executive. Not because there's anything wrong with an individual office holder, but because you always have that possibility that somebody who is there for four years with no recourse is letting the train run off the tracks. Also, I had the sheer joy of having a conversation with Mr. Bill Webb yesterday. And entirely unprovoked, he looked at me and he said about the council, do they not realize that a good HR person will pay for themselves? And I, I don't know how well you guys know Bill Webb. That man does not like to spend taxpayer money. That guy is about as tight of a person as I met. And when he is saying to me, if we do this and we hire the right person, he's, he's one crazy person, I get that. Oh, I, I've spent 13 years knowing that one, Brad. But my point is that when Bill Webb is suggesting that we should spend a little bit of money, I take what Bill says, God bless him, with a grain of salt. But I think that that's a fair perspective to consider, that somebody that tight, who yells at me every day he sees me about something, thinks we should spend this money from his own experiences running a business, maybe it's worth the short, the extra cost for the long-term benefit. Is that white or Cass?
I don't know about this. Going into next.
I guess speaking of wages, the other thing, and this is, I'm not blaming Jenny, this is a communication thing. But last year, the last two years, one office was asked to take, undertake this whole wage study thing and to work with the council on over, on overhauling the matrix. A different office was charged with implementing. There are going to be communication issues. We have somebody who is not being the right, paid the right wage right now, and, and it's, it's no one's fault. It's just a communication issue that could have been resolved or avoided if we had an HR function being done by HR instead of spreading responsibilities across multiple departments.
And on that note about the, somebody getting paid the wrong amount, I mean, it got addressed to me and I, I have no problem going and trying to help. But I don't understand why we have to get to the point where payroll's not getting paid the right way. So a commissioner or a council person has to go and a- address it, try and figure out, because not getting.
Was it, was the wage submitted to?
Yes. Correct. Yes.
Well, right now, we have a motion on the floor. We have more discussion? We have a second on that? Oh, sorry. Okay. So is there any further discussion on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
You're in favor, Major? The motion was not to fund it.
No, the motion was not to fund it.
It was your motion, right?
Okay, we have a motion not to fund HR. All those with a second, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Three to four? All right, moving forward. The next thing up on the, on the list, like I said, if somebody has a better idea, I'm more than willing to listen, but I'll just go down this list because I don't want us to get headed in 17 different directions and all. So, the request of new employees is next on the list. Superior Court is asking for the navigator. She was very kind of wanting some documentation that I hope everybody has seen. We've seen it a couple of different times, but... Then we have CDC that's asking for a project coordinator. And then we have the, uh, surveyor was talking about an assistant surveyor, but that was not actually in her budget, but that was something that she brought up, so. Them are the three requested employee changes. That would be, well, then the clerk had a part-time, the full-time, she was, she was combining two budgets to, no increase. EMA was asking for a part-time, more requested. And probation office was asking for their administrator to go full-time.
And if I recall correctly, you guys made a decision on the hours for the, for the budget for the part-time EMA last meeting?
Yeah, and, and we did. I'm just kind of going down through everything that we had, so if there's any further discussion, they are correct, the EMA, we did talk about our last one, the part-time, we reduced it from the 12.5 to 8,000. But these, these are the, these are the employee adjustments, either full-time or part-time adjustments that have been requested. This, this year, hold it. We can do them individually, we can do them as a group. I guess first of all, you know, what discussion is there on, on the requested employees?
Well, I'll, I'll go into the navigator, the, you know, I think that's, was that funded three quarters of the year already?
I have half of next year funded, so it actually only costs, yeah.
So, um...
With the potential to have, if I could get an extension, it's possible, but I could, but I don't know.
And Judge, are you working on the, the grant that Sheila, is that going to work out or is it...
It is not. I looked into that kind of 100% match, that you have to match 100%, to whatever the grant is that you received, I brought the document. The application process, it was due in January, April, funding announced in September. I did follow up with Griffin on that. He thought that potentially there might be some wiggle room at the deadlines, but the problem is, it's a match, so you're going to pay just as much to, we're going to have to match that anyway. So, for this year at least, it doesn't look like it would be available, but potentially for next year, I keep an eye on it. For 2020, sorry.
And so, I guess my thoughts on the navigator is that it, it appears to me that she does a lot of work and if you haven't thought that alcohol abuse, drug abuse is not a problem in this county, then you haven't been paid attention. So, you know, I'm in favor of the navigator position to, to fund it this half of the next year and see where the grant fall. You know, that Judge Cooper is working on and, you know, just to see what happens with that. But I think we're talking a little bit more, you know, these are people that are in crisis and if we turn, you know, Kennedy's people, you know, get them fixed, so to speak, and that they're not, not the problem that they are when they're on these drugs, it saves us a ton. You know, it's probably something that I don't know that we ever see, it's like Judge has come up with a lot of good numbers on that. I'm in favor of putting that navigator position.
I...
Go ahead.
I was, I was just going to ask on the navigator, since we're discussing that one. Okay, talking about what Jeff's saying, if we were to, if the grant funds it into, you know, in the middle of next year and we fund it for the remainder of that year, is, you know, one of the requests for that person to become a Plastak County employee, consider a full-time employee, but that's, is that still part of the thought? So then, you know, we, we talk about if we didn't have, you know, and not saying a or nay, I'm just, bear with me. So if we said that that person is going to be funded, you know, till the middle of next year, then we'd fund them for the rest of it, of the year, we're actually saying we'll fund it from now till eternity because there'll be a new employee, a full-time employee of the county unless we turn that job.
Well, if you're saying that, and if this group doesn't have, I guess the goal call to say, well, you know, we, we got another six months, but, you know, if it does can't get it funded or the money doesn't turn around or you haven't money to fund it, then you have to say no.
Okay, no, no, I, yeah, I'm, I just wanted to clarify the, whether we were talking about just leaving the position as it is and funding it for the last half of the year or if we were still talking about making it a full-time position in the county. So that, I'm just clarifying that.
Fund it as a full-time position, you know, the lady has sent, sent this, I'm going to call it work for us.
Right.
She sent this, if you look at that, and then we had it, you know, your bravery, I appreciate you saying that in a meeting, I know that's hard to say, but you had a person right here that sits with us almost every meeting, saying that this lady has helped her and her husband, so, you know...
No, no, I, I, I was just trying to clarify whether we were talking about, that's all I was clarifying.
I appreciate you doing that, but I think we make the mistake when we say to everybody in this room, when we fund something or, you know, we create a position, it's good forever.
No, that was...
We're beating ourselves at the, at the game, you know, I would never say that, I would say, hey, look, this is the best we can do, this is the money that we have, where we can see what money shows up and where it settles. And if it sells right, you know, we'll fund it. If it doesn't, then we've got to say...
Maybe my, my wording for funding it forever was not the best choice of words, but I was just saying, I was just trying to, like I say, clarify whether we were talking about leaving it as the position that it's now and funding it into next year, or whether we were talking about making it full-time. That clarification is...
Chris, on this navigator budget, we've got Community Foundation covering this for first six months of 2025.
Correct.
At 40,658. And you have it in your budget for this navigator to be the second act for 40,658. Now, are we talking about wages at 80,000 or are we talking about...
No, it's, it's one. So the way that the grant cycle works, it actually ends on June 30 of 25. So the total amount would be the 40,658, I think. That's the total amount that we're collecting, half of that, so from January to June would be covered by the grant. So it's, it's only 40,000 for the year.
For the 12 months?
For 12 months.
Not for, not for first act, right?
Second act.
Correct. 40,658 for 12 months.
Correct. So it would count, so essentially minus the grant, it would be the 20,658, whatever.
A light center. So are you asking for this, this wage to plus benefits then?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to be more than 20,000, so if the 20,000 covers the wages ending then?
Right. No, 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 the 20,000 is just the salaries. I put it in just like I do every other staff person, I just put it in at the wage according to the matrix.
Yeah, so their, their salary for the whole year is 40,658 and the, the, and for 2025, half of that 40,000 will be paid for by the grant, so the 20,000, let's call it 20,658, will be paid for out of the county, plus per, insurance, whatever benefit package the employee...
Do you remember, if it's made full-time or on time, you know, where you're slotting the research support?
I put it in at, I'm at five, because 22 dollars per 300, obviously zero force, yeah.
Okay, so it's funded until June or July of next year, and we're waiting to see where money lays and we're not rushing into anything, so why would we treat this any differently than we treated the HR position? It's funded till June or July. If she comes back in June or July and asks for an additional to fund it for the rest of the year as a contracted employee and we can revisit it as a full-time employee for the next budget cycle, when finances are different.
Off the morning, when we talked to 20,000 dollars, was it squared, was the...
59?
What's your assistant?
The assistant was, is in the budget already. Same thing, they want health insurance.
I can tell you that Sheila did this because we're talking about two different sets of people. We're talking about employees that have a job, that have insurance. We're talking about some risks that this county was willing to accept for, since HR was developed. And we're talking about a set of people that have a serious problem, that sometimes ends their lives, costs the county a ton of money, and this is the way we fix it. So, we go back and forth all day on the HR, part-time concern, we're done talking.
We are.
And I think Brad is exactly right, we're talking a lot less one evening, we're talking about people that are at the screen risk.
And I believe...
Every day, some of them are dying, and this is the screen risk. This isn't a kind of risk that the county accepts, this is a screen risk. I don't know what the sheriff has in jail now, but almost 70, well, 78% of those people are in there because they have some type of abuse or drugs or alcohol problem. And so, there's the cost, and there's the risk. And if we can get 10 of those out of there, that'll pay for your HR and pay for all...
Right. I believe the hospital's also funding navigator, or hosted the job, and so we'll have...
Well, that's a hospital business, so they're a private entity, they want to hire a navigator to do their business, that's up to them.
I need full clarification. So are you asking for this position in county 10? Who did you put that in?
In, well, in my budget, because right now I'm... Yes, it would be under three lines to go.
Oh, here we go. Nope, I don't have anything.
Did I add it? It should be on copy that I gave.
I know. Anyway, I pulled this, I'm a problem.
Okay, so then, with that being said, is there any way you have that to be there for us next year on your opioid restriction, to them, to your position being paid by opioid restriction?
It's possible, the way that I, I just want to make sure that we have this person employed, that she gets her benefits, because I can tell you that she's wanted by a lot of other entities who want her to do that. She's been a huge victim for us. There's several people here today, and people all appreciate it from that, to tell you about personal experience, just to address some of the things that Sheila mentioned. It is true that the hospital does have community access, but the difference is that those, most of the people that we serve don't want to go out, can't go out to the hospital or any location, so what they can do is they can meet the serma in the court, in the court year, where they start, where they are. And so it's easier for them to access those services, it's more comfortable for them to do that. So those are some of the reasons why it's important for us to have that.
So I just brought that up.
And Katie's not beholden to the hospital, right? She's not beholden to Port County, she reports to Judge Cooper, but she finds services for us outside our traditional services. She's got a split gut now with... Who can take someone directly from the jail or from their home to a residential placement and save the sheriff's department a lot of transportation.
Yeah.
So it's, it's nice to have her as a county employee because that way she's not beholden to that other than the county.
All right, do we, do we want to do these one at a time, then just step the vote on each one as we go down? Might be easier than trying to do them as a group and then say...
I can speed it up if you want me to.
You can speed it up?
That'd be great.
I'll make a motion to fund the community navigator, whoever's called, and none of the rest.
All right, when you say none of the rest, are you talking about, so we clarify, CDC, surveyor, the clerk's part-time and probations? Administrator going full-time, or are you just talking about the first three?
I'm talking about that, because we're still 1.1 million dollars short.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I'm not against everything there, but it's like, we don't have the money.
All right, yeah, I just want to clarify for the, for the, for the vote, so we have a... Yeah, we will.
Okay, I highly recommend that we get, get Killane to work for him full-time. The way she explained to me the volatility process and everything going in and out of her office was probably what convinced us all to react.
If you, her pay can be subsidized out of the court perpetuation fund, which is set up to, one of the things that it can do is to cover wages. And that's what I asked for from the beginning for, for my part-time position to a full-time. The perpetuation fund is funded by fees and fines that are collected by the clerk's office, and there's enough money in there that I can, I can subsidize the rest of her pay out of that perpetuation fund. And it's, it's not just, right now it's election-related, I mean, early voting starts to be from today, but for document preservation and everything else that the clerk's office handles. I, I, I'm asking, I'm very serious, if I can get her to go full-time today to help me out with everything that's going on in Washington, and everything else that goes on the clerk's office, they can, her pay can be subsidized, including that out of the court perpetuation fund.
Thank you.
How much you have in that fund, you men?
Well, we spent, what, what, like, 50,000 to this candy company, so last year we had another 50,000 in there. New legislation went into effect on July 1st that increased the amount of fines that can go into the court perpetuation fund, so it's sustainable.
So what you're proposing then, that I guess I didn't hear it before, that you would pay out of your perpetual fund and then take what you've got, you're spending on her as part-time?
Right.
And then you could cover all that to make her full-time with your fund and not cost us any more money, is that...
Yes, sir, yes, that's exactly it.
Does that change how you feel then about her employee?
Yeah.
I would say, is there, is there any other, probably before we put anything to a vote, if there's any other department heads or whatever, given, most of them the opportunity to speak, if they have any, anything they want to say on their, you know, on behalf of their requests, please speak up now.
I'm going to speak on behalf of Nathan's office. We took, council took somebody out of his office, I don't, what year was it, 20? 2019? He continues to get more work, he continues to keep working and doing whatever we ask of him, whatever the commissioners ask of him. We used to have it in the budget. I do sit on his board. He does get pulled in a zillion different directions. It's going to continue to keep getting busier for him, so I would suggest possibly thinking about giving him a person.
I think you have one scanning documents over the son of a...
But that is not, she's doing that because if you remember, when I got a person put back in the budget, it was part-time. And nobody, this was mid-pandemic when this was going on or towards the tail end of the pandemic, nobody wanted to come work in my office for that pay rate for that part-time. I was lucky enough that Mike put me in touch with Taylor. Taylor is great, but Taylor does not have the background, the experience, and when the council was gracious enough to make the position full-time... And when the council was gracious enough to make the position full-time, it was at a clerical position in that, that level. So I don't need full-time secretary slash administrative. What I need is somebody who has the background, the skills, and the commensurate pay grade of what I had before 2020, who can actually take on housing, helping with managing housing projects or represent my office on our broadband task force, things like that. If it weren't for the fact that I would be putting out somebody who has been loyal and helpful while I've had her, I would happily eliminate the position I have for one that's going to command a higher salary and give me the opportunity to hire somebody who has the skill set that we need. And, I mean, what she's doing now, yes, I've got her scanning. She is not contributing significantly to my office, but she is contributing significantly to the courthouse project and to helping the assessor's office to avoid having to put all of those boxes of documents back in the courthouse when we are trying to be more space-efficient after this remodel. So, yeah, you were right, but the pay grade plus the current needs of the county just don't make the position I have now what I actually need. Yes. I, I would love to, but- Amount of time I actu, and the amount of time I actually have available to dedicate to the job I'm supposed to be doing, let alone to train somebody else in it versus meetings, courthouse project, the wage study in the last couple of years. It is not been, the time just isn't there. And that's even after I went from a thirty-five hour work week to a forty-hour work week. But she's not paid to do that. She is paid to do clerical work, not programmatic work. That's my entire point, is that I wasn't given the salary range necessary to hire somebody for what I actually need.
Then they hire you, call up their own TV set. Why do they have you?
Because we don't have I T or a commissioner's assistant. And, and to be fair, Mike, to that point, part of the reason that that doesn't bother me is because between the Justice Center and the courthouse, I met so many meetings giving updates. If these weren't going on and I wasn't reporting that, it would be a more frustrating thing, but because I am usually reporting on- But I agree.
Well, that, that would be up to the commissioner.
Well, honestly, the, the, honestly, the real answer there, Brad, is as the project is running with me representing as the owner's rep, we're not accounting for my salary in the courthouse budget. If we brought in a project manager, that would have to come out of the bond process and that would be that much less money we have to spend on the building. And the budget's already pretty tight. You're, yes, ideally that would be it, but with the budget constraints, I'm not sure that that would be in the best interest of the project. Because there are caps on funding that that don't exist on funding my office's operations other than the available cash.
Well, we had a, a motion on the floor. You amend your motion, send your motion. We had a second on the motion. I had a second.
And the clerk can pay for hers out of her perpetuation fund, change, right?
Yes.
And I'll change the motion like the clerk, pay for hers and then fund the-
So you- Talk about funding the navigator.
Yeah, at the twenty thousand, at the six fifty-eight. For forty thousand, go.
Yeah.
She's going to need twenty thousand to finish out next year for sure.
So you're approving that at the twenty thousand as a wage, as half the wages.
And her benefits are in there, right?
Right, and she's doing this out of, she's doing this out of the county general and the benefits come out of the commissioner's budget.
I did.
So, so you motioned to approve the navigator, you-
And approved the clerk and nothing else.
And the clerk and nothing else.
Yeah, but the clerks get their money out of perpetuation fund. That's my motion.
I want to clarify something. You've also got stipends on this list, and I thought the auditor's stipend, which goes to Teresa, has already been approved, and then clerk has not because next year's not an election. Do I have that correct or?
Yeah, that, that's what, that's what we did at the last meeting. And like I say, the E M A was voted on at the last meeting to reduce the part-time from twelve-five to eight thousand. And the E M A truck was voted on at the last meeting, go down from sixty-two thousand to six thousand.
And that's it so far, correct?
Yes. Right now, we're just talking about the requested employees, which is Superior Court Navigator, C D C Project Coordinator, the Surveyor Assistant, which, like I said, she wasn't necessarily asking for, but was discussed when she was here. The clerk, part-time to full-time. The probation office administrator going full-time. Right now, according to Mike's motion, his motion is to approve the Superior Court Navigator and the clerk's part-time to full-time. Other, CDC, surveyor, and probation. Not the- What, you second? Okay. We have a second from Brad. Further discussion?
I know that, hundred percent know that.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
So we've got two, two, five, two, four.
Break a tie.
In the C D C budget, I would love to see the advertising be reduced. Advertising and marketing. I, well, reduce everybody else. The ads for-
Marketing.
So that'd be advertising, right?
No, no, it's marketing. Advertising is like legal notices, local stuff like that. Marketing.
Because it's at, am I right? Is it at eighty?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me. I don't, somewhere between seventy and eighty. Sounds right.
It's in there.
And you want it reduced too?
I'd like to see it left out this year. So you don't want us to market the county? I don't think it's doing any benefits.
It comes between doing any benefits generally and how we program it. As you recall, we have a Tourism Advisory Council this year for the first time that is going to be involved in the conversations of how we allocate the funds. It's not going to be, honestly, because of the lack of staffing, cruise control like it's been the last few years. It's going to be up to the Tourism Council, which is representatives of campgrounds, state parks, Airbnbs, livery, actual tourism businesses, who are going to provide the guidance on how we spend that. If you want to reduce it, that's fine, but just simply taking away our ability to market one of our greatest resources in this county, our natural resource recreation, I don't think that's advisable. I would have to speak to the individual businesses, which is what we're planning to discuss at next week's meeting.
Are they, it's seventy-five. What, what do you do with it?
So about half of it is television commercials along with some digital ads that accompany those. So if we're marketing on Fox thirty-two in Chicago, we'll get some hits on their website as well. Part of it is the D N R Hunting and Fishing Guides, which are statewide. Part of it is Travel Indiana Magazine, which is both print and digital. It's, I want to say, a print spot in one of each of the quarterly magazines and then a number of digital editorials from like April through October, give or take. Part of it is the greatnews.life out of Valpo, which does a combination of profiling new businesses, projects in the community, and actually doing coverage of events. So they will come down for the Fall Festival or the Power from the Past and they'll do some interviews and get some pictures and report on that. And then this year, because we had a little bit extra, we have a half-page ad in the Indiana Colts Yearbook that everyone who goes to the Colts game and picks up sees. So it is a combination of Chicagoland, localized to northern Indiana statewide, and a combination of print, digital, and television. And the, I mean, we can always, if, if we don't want to do any television or we want to cut that from thirty to twenty, that's an annual thing that we can always amend.
I guess one thing is, and I'm not trying to be confrontational, but I know we sent out a bunch of emails, sent out this list, and all, and now we're bringing something that we want to discuss. I even put that in the email. I, I hope you've seen the email. If you didn't, damn, I apologize. You know, I know you see. But, you know, now we're being asked to make decisions on something that, you know, we're asked somebody to give us, you know, last minute information on. I just don't think that's fair. You know, that's why this list was sent out to- Because there was a lot of questions and a lot of information that people wanted to put out. And, yes, that's part of politics, you know, but, uh-
I think we may explain, I've been told it's in the channels in Chicago that nobody watches. We have the taxes for the state park.
No.
So-
I, in, I, in response to that, I will note that I have brought to this council before, when we did this restructuring, the idea of implementing an innkeeper's tax so that we could capitalize on visitors coming to the county. And the council did not have the appetite to implement that despite the fact that it almost exclusively taxes visitors and not residents. What's that? Yeah? And Airbnbs, yes. That depends on what rate we set it at. There is a range of, I want to say, three to eight percent that the county can set it on under state code. And there may be some technicalities based on circumstantial criteria I couldn't cite from the code offhand. But it could, at the bare minimum, I would suggest it would cover half to two-thirds just based on existing properties of the marketing bill. Half to two-thirds, minimum. And that's just based on existing properties and no potential future growth in a hotel or more Airbnbs, more bed and breakfasts.
Tim had a, you know, had his thoughts. Are you going to put a motion on that?
I would like to make a motion to at least reduce it fifty percent.
All right, we have a motion. You have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You always have to ask for this, too.
Yes and no. We can always ask for an additional, but a lot of the scheduling gets done early in the year. So we'd be coming for an additional in January in that case. Because we've got to decide how we want to allocate it and get all of those, whether it's, you know, the same TV channels or different ones or no TV, whether it's the same, more with print, more with digital. We have to allocate that early in the year so that we're actually ready to go by spring when people are starting, or late winter even, when people are starting to plan their trips. You, you guys are the fiscal body. I mean, we cut thirty-five, it's basically we do everything but television. He said cut it by half, I think.
Just a second, I want to look up something here. Just, just for informational purposes, the, in two thousand and eighteen, it was forty-nine, six, ninety-six. Nineteen, it was sixty-seven. Twenty-twenty, it was fifty-nine, nine ninety. Twenty-one, it was eighty-seven, nine seventy-eight. Then in twenty-two, it went down to fifty. Twenty-three, fifty-five, twenty-three, then twenty-four. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion's over. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, so the mo, the motion is to give Nathan forty thousand for marketing for the twenty-five fiscal year. Okay, you still second that? Okay. So all the, all those in favor for the forty thousand? Opposed?
Community Foundation is in there?
Yeah, that's down here. Community Foundation is, is asking for fifteen thousand from the county. We, we didn't. And then they came to us, they were doing one project in the county and they asked for a, for the county to invest in it. And we gave them over two years, thirty thousand. Last year, they came back, asked for fifteen.
There it is, we don't have any money.
And then the question is, if, you know, if we don't, you know, if the council doesn't want to give to, you know, those private budgets. those private budgets, not one, how do you say, community foundations, or any other groups that need to be looked at? Kind of been prior to these meetings, think about that.
There are separate levy within the property tax levy. They have, as long as the council keeps it, they have their own dedicated tax fund where all of it is eligible only for their use.
Thought this one was some, for air handling, something. Well, you brought up Community Foundation. What's, what's your thoughts on that?
I don't know, they got around 96. So it's like, I'll make a motion to, with the zero, it doesn't have a special break.
All right, we have a motion to reduce the, uh, Community Foundation, best of zero. How many? Have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Oh, that was... I think, yeah, I don't want, I don't want to, I don't remember exactly if there was a definition of that document with me. But, uh, like I said, I know the first time it was requested, it was for a specific program. Yeah, the leadership, yeah, yeah, community leadership. I just, I guess for me, it's kind of like, you know, you know, the County Navigator and things like that, you know, uh, the stuff that the State Department does for, you know, trying to promote the county to solve problems. I don't, you know, it's not the same level as Navigator, earlier discussions, you know. You know, I guess it's a matter of whether, whether the county feels we have our, you know, yeah, whether it's something that, you know, we should, you know, taxpayers should be investing, or whether, you know, they get their money and, uh, you know, if they have a specific problem like they had, or a specific program like they had before, that you want them to come in front of you and ask for the money.
Do you want to hear from her? She'll give me a call and...
Okay.
Correct me, glad?
Yeah, I would say half, I mean, I guess we all have to, but it's a very hard decision.
Sure, I, I, I just want to have the, you know, to discuss, like, that's the reason. I know, I know, a lot of times, people don't want to say things ahead of time because, you know, it's easier to make them decisions when...
Are you there, Ms. Wright?
Yes, Judge.
Let me turn you up, hang on.
I think, I think we should give, you know, everybody should have that opportunity to speak of what they, speak of their program, give their, their, their rebuttal.
I think, Ms. Wright, they were asking what the $15,000 that was requested was for.
Sure. So, um, hello, everyone, I apologize, I, I'm not there. Um, the 15,000 is a request to support our Community Grants Fund, which, which will be matched two to one by the Lilly Endowment. Our Community Grants Fund is how we support our local organizations. So, for example, Community Grants recently funded all of the Lucas devices for all of the fire departments, the CPR devices. Um, Community Grants is an investment in the community to enhance the quality of life in place. And so we were respectfully asking, uh, for your support to, to help us do the work.
Forty-five. It's how many dollars for each dollar?
It's matched two to one, so 15,000 unlocks an additional 30,000 for our Community Grants Fund. Oh, um, at the moment, uh, we have about 80 to 90,000 dollars each year. Um, and the gift, the Lilly Endowment is helping us to build up that fund. So if we, if we meet our match, we will probably have over $100,000 a year to invest into Palasguy County.
Yeah, because we're, we're not the only ones that's contributing to the match. This is just our, our donation to, the county's donation to the match.
Correct. I'm, I'm asking everybody to support the Community Foundation.
So like, you know, the, the towns and, you know, other businesses and things like that contribute as well.
And there's, nurse, they, did anybody else go to the annual banquet? I don't think I saw anybody. They, um, are also helping with, um, the nurses' training at, at the high school and those kind of things, so, and welding. Correct, it's, right, this, right, it's county, countywide.
Yes, Judge, um, Community Grants supports all areas of Palasguy County. Our schools, our nonprofits, um, individuals who want to do charitable work, and anything that makes Palasguy County a better place to live, work, and play.
Oh, we're all on that motion now? All right.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wright. He's withdrawn that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion has been rescinded. So I guess now we need to have a motion, I like to say a motion, you know, to either, to support it or not.
It's in the budget, right? When we make our final thing, when we make our final motion to include the budget.
Budget, as proven as this. But, so, nobody's, everybody's good with it staying in the budget? Okay, that one will stay in the budget. Um, we have also, uh, two wage adjustments requested that were in the budget. Maintenance Director's wage to be increased by $2 an hour and soil waters to be increased, their coordinator's wage to be increased by $2,000. I assume since that was in the, I mean, what, what, what was the wage in the budget for? Was it for the, for the... The note that I have is that, uh, yeah, they went up from 23, 23 to 25. 24, it was 23, 004, which... Right. Should be 24, 90, and they raised it to 25. And I have next to it that, you know, the question was, was a rate, raise rate $2,000. So that wouldn't be to cover the, the 24... Right. Actually, Education Coordinator asking, thought they were asking for a raise on. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's actually the District Board Coordinator, but... That was what our annual salary now is supposed to be? Uh, I guess at this point, question, like I said, I've got it wrote down next to Education Coordinator, that's part-time, looks like. From my notes, they're requesting $2,000 increase in her education, you know, in the part-time. We need to get that, that answer, somebody else remembers. Yeah, I know, I, I think my type, I think my type-up is incorrect. Or it might be correct. Like I said, I, I've got the note listed next to... I guess I don't understand on the, on the paperwork because it says 49, 45, 9. But then, but there's no $2,000 added into, into that rate on the, on the budget. We got the, the Maintenance Director increase in wage, which is being requested $2 an hour.
Can I just like to remind the council that we put a hell of a lot of time into overhauling the entire matrix? And the Maintenance Director is already at the top-out wage within the labor trades and crafts matrix. So if you think he is wa- that is warranted, that's one thing, but it has to be an address, you have to address the matrix. You're just going to put us back out of whack with the entire system? We just spent a significant amount of time in the CDC working with the council to overhaul?
I mean, I mean, for me, and, and, you know, I, I 100% with what Nathan agrees with, or just stated there. I mean, even, even for any of the employees' wages to be adjusted, not talking about cost of living increase for the year, but wage adjustments. You know, we just went through, you know, a year of a lot of work, a lot of work prior to that year, getting the information and all. And then to turn around and start moving it all over the place now makes absolutely no sense to me, plus some great dustification. And they did it.
No, they didn't. He did, he got a much smaller increase, most employees did, because he was significantly higher than his predecessor, but he did still get a small increase from one year. Say that again? Right, 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 yeah, yeah. Hey, we're on the same page then, but I think...
Yeah, 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 we are, yeah, we're all, yeah, it's the same conversation. All right. Well, and, and, and that's me. I mean, to me, you know, I can just, I know how much work was done on the matrix, how much work we did trying to set these salaries and stuff. And even if it's $2,000, you know, to me, it wouldn't be fair then to say, well, we need to go out and look at everybody else's pay rates because maybe they all need to be adjusted too by $1,000 or whatever, so... All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of leaving the pay rates following the matrix progression? All say aye? Closed? All right, passes. Yeah. Okay, the last thing I have on my list, or our list, I just typed it up, my list, uh, is the Assessor's aerial mapping at 50,000 and the Clerk's voting machines at, uh, 56, uh, 56,000, voting machines. Yes, thank you. Everybody should have seen that email that was sent out. Uh, we'll come to the Assessor in a minute. We'll stick with the Clerk, since she chimed up right away. Is there any, any questions or anything, anything that, uh, you want to ask of the, of the Clerk on the voting machines?
Can any of that come from the perpetuation fund or is it a short?
No, Brad.
No, Brad.
So how old are the machines that we have now?
They're over 20 years old.
But they're still working?
They're still working, yeah, they are.
And they're only used it for two years?
Right.
How, uh, how many machines did you need total?
Forty.
It was 40 total, that's what I thought the, yeah, the 56 something was. All right, we, uh, any further discussion on the voting machines? Motion on the close clerk's voting machine? I, uh, I will say one thing, um, I think, you know, keeping our voting machines with election issues add, not, not this county, but across our country and all, you know, the more, you know, the, the, the more stable the machines, the, you know, the better our, I, I wouldn't be in favor of doing 20 machines. I think if you're gonna do them, you need them all and split the payment up. I also do think that probably both these things are very good applications for money that come from projects going on within the county because of one-time expenses, you know, there are things that we buy and we pay for, county owns it. So I think that, I would think that if, if it didn't pass as part of the budget, I think these are very good things to look at to be funded in another funding mechanism. Certainly want to see, wouldn't want to see it not to get funded. I guess what I was alluding to is we have money that we have received this year that could be used for one, that I think is better used for one-time purchases, which these would fit into, than using them for payroll or, you know, funding the operations of government that continue forever and ever, so. All right, we have a motion to not fund the new voting machines for the 2025 fiscal year. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion as second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Close? All right, the assessor's aerial mapping? Letter out. No, I appreciate it, yes, I, it got there before the meeting, so. Any questions for the assessor on aerial mapping, anything that's, uh, want to know?
Actually, I believe it gets spun right every two years. We, I chose that package as opposed to every three, is that what you're asking?
Well, GIS comes through, or WTH GIS comes through every three years now?
I, I believe so.
Yeah.
Sometimes more than that. And the WTH that we currently have does not offer what this company is offering despite us being able to really look at the properties.
So you're, you're looking at it to, for measurement purposes, is that what it is?
Well, part of, yes, part of it would be for that because, for instance, with all the solar that is predicted to go in, we're gonna need to be able to measure those fields.
Okay, so I guess I'm thinking that the, the building department would, would provide the permit and measure.
You're, you're right, they should be going to the building department to get a permit, but what Carolyn needs and what my office needs are two steps, two different things. So not in, not everyone goes to, I'm sure Carolyn would let you know that, not everyone goes to the voting department like they're supposed to.
That you're mentioning solar specifically, so that's what I-
Well, that was the biggest example that I could come up with. We also have, I think in the past I've shared what our assessed value we brought in this year as opposed to the previous year, and the year before that, you know, the difference in what we're picking.
So what does it do that GIS can't do?
Well, it's more detailed, it's closer. If you look at the WTH map in our office, we cannot get the detail that the, the letter that I sent shows the Jasper County thing. And I only asked her to send, she sent pictures of the solar fields to show the difference.
And then the guy that comes around on foot that measures too, he, he comes around there for two years or three?
It, the county has done 25% every four years, but we still have to go back at different times to the same property if they not completed it as they said they would.
So this would eliminate the need for him?
Not necessarily.
I, I think, like I said, for the, the web GIS, that does a, you know, basically just a aerial mapping of the county, which is a high flyover, from what I understood reading this and when the gentleman was here, this can, you can basically say, go to this location and it can do a more detailed analysis of, you know, pretty much how the, what color the shades are in the house, I'm not saying it's that detailed, but, you know, it can-
The last, the last time the WTH was thrown was in 2021, and so there's people that have to take woods down and turn it into far ground, so that would pick, WTH would not pick that up.
And where this program has the change finder, so it does.
So somebody's gonna be looking at this constantly, non-stop, and what are you gonna compare it to?
Well, we have, have the base, and what we would do is take our property record cards now, just like we do every reassi, every reassessment or every time we get an improvement and removals in, look at the property record card to the aerial photos to see if we have not gotten something. Does that answer your question?
Well, kind of, but I, I don't know how many square miles we have to, so you're gonna, I mean, how are you gonna identify that unless it's, somebody tells you that they took the woods down and somebody's gonna have to be watching all along?
No, we're, we monitor records all the time.
And I think with the, the change finder, Holly, once you get your photographs or two sessions, right, it'll-
Compare the two.
It would tell us, correct.
And how long, how long is that gonna take then? When you get, if we, if we spend the bit, can you get a flight right off the bat?
From what I understood.
And then when, when, when is the next flight?
I think it's every other year.
Okay. And then is it, do we pay the 50,000 every time they fly?
It's once a year.
All right, but I appreciate all the, all the information that both the clerk and the assessor has provided. I, I kind of look at this, like I said, you know, I, I think both of these are good tools for the county. Once again, I look at this as possibly a very good situation where you pay for that 50,000 one-time expense, you know, first thing we need to do is figure out how we're gonna manage, put together some kind of procedure on the management, the uses of solar revenue coming into the county when it comes in, and then things like this, I think, are very good candidates for being paid for out of something like that, that have unnecessary local taxes.
And I think I did show in the letter the difference in what if you had solar as opposed to the far ground that's already committed, not saying for more. There was a huge difference.
Is that a motion?
I'd make a motion to not fund the-
Aerial mapping?
Aerial mapping.
All right, we have a motion, do we have any further discussion? Yes, ma'am? As, as, as in solar?
That was in the letter, Ken, would you like me to read that?
Yeah.
It says, 17,000 acres at a current 24 to 25 assessed value of 2,200 and 2,200 maybe dollar base rate, not taking into account the soil productivity of each soil type per acre times the tax rate we have currently in Jefferson Township. We have 19 taxi districts, I only asked for one, that was $105,000.156. 17,000 acres at the current 24 to 25 assessed value per acre at $13,000 per acre, which is what the state of Indiana sets for solar, that income would be 2,310,101 dollars. So there's a huge difference right there.
So the, the ADA only applies to tax abatements on the personal property that is installed. The change in assessed value is excluded from that because the state does not allow abatement on land values. Now, that might actually not be that much in net new dollars because of maximum levy, but it would, but it would result in reduced rates for everyone else. Ken, um, first of, I wanted, I, I don't know enough about this request from Holly, I don't know if it's good or bad, but one thing I might mention in the context of benefiting from making sure that the county is able to keep up, that her office is able to keep up on assessment changes for solar and other uses. Um, I don't, I don't know that it's gotten very far yet, but there have been some conversations about the possibility of hiring an engineering firm to sort of serve as a solar guru for the county, um, with their services, if they were to be hired, being paid at the same 105% of cost that's in our building fees, so that the solar companies would pay that rather than the taxpayers. If and when the county might move forward with that, that might be a conversation to have with them rather than just to decide if they see the benefit in, you know, right now, I think the idea is mostly they would coordinate with, between a solar developer and building department, surveyor, highway department, and the commissioners, maybe the assessor's office is part of that conversation too, and it could even potentially, this cost for this be built into their contract to get to what Brad was suggesting about the developers paying this cost rather than the taxpayers. I can't say for certain that that would work, and it's gonna depend on whether or not a solar project manager would be hired, but that might be one angle to do this and make sure that Holly is involved in those conversations in addition to the departments that have already been theoretically included, and try it that way.
All right, Brad, you had a motion? Motion still stands? Okay, Brad, a motion that we would stop do the aerial mapping in 2025? You had a second? Have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Close? Three, four? Revoted? Well, that's all the stuff that was on the list that I sent out. Uh, I, I know I'm not gonna sit on the board after December 31st, but I hope that both these aerial mappings, voting machines gets looked at as alternate funding sources, but I think they're both things that benefit the county at the end of the day.
How about the raises? Have you already decided that?
Yep.
We can do that?
We can do that.
I'll make a motion to make total county employees 2.8%.
Right, we have a motion for the 2025 cost of living increase to be 2.8%, which I believe follows the state standard or the federal?
Federal.
Federal. All right, we have a motion as second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Close? All right, passes. 2.8%.
We got part time. I know we have to discuss part time and changing everything around, but I just, I talked to White County and they're the same problems that we have, it's harder, there just needs to be, a lot of work needs to be done if you wanna do it that way. So I think we could just give part time and get much of a raise any other time, 5% raise this year, and just go with that for right now. Do you have problems?
I, I thought we addressed part time and we were going to follow the, uh, follow the, the standard that was set out, and everybody was gonna use what was in their budget and run it out when they ran out of money in their budget, unless I misunderstand what you're, what you're stating. Yeah, and back last meeting or the meeting before, I thought we, we, we made a, there was a motion or a vote made to, to follow the, the outline of the part time, and we would just- would just leave what money was in their budgets, just the fact that we would need more money to balance the budget out, you know, at that rate to give them the same amount of hours, but the motion and what passed was that we would leave the budget the same as it is, they would pay at the rates according to the, to the, uh, uh, different levels that were, that were set up. If people ran out of money in their budget on their part-time, then they would have to come back to the board requesting an additional.
Does part-time get a raise?
Yes.
So my understanding is that you, part-time, so it would follow whatever the matrix had for the scales?
Yeah, it followed the scales.
And the, the office holders would have to modify their budget next year accordingly?
Right.
And so, just providing those numbers for part-time?
The new part-time wages?
Yeah.
I guess the same group that always provides them to you, which always comes from the auditor's office, or, I mean, I, I have them, I can send them to you, send it out as well. So Judge, how that'll work is, you know, once the two point eight has been calculated, we'll say that a person at position X in the matrix makes twenty dollars an hour, and I'm, and we've got these tiers, you know, so we'll say that that's a comma three. If somebody part-time is basically that equivalent but part-time, so if that part-time was made full-time, it would fall in there, it would be two steps below that, so we'll say seventeen dollars, I'm just throwing it, but, so it, it'll, the question, the work that has to be done is with each department head and office holder figuring out exactly what that workload is. So you and I had talked specifically about your part-time people, how you think they're basically at the same level as your bailiff. And so, a part-time deputy auditor, is she, her equivalent, the lowest in the tier, or is it the, the two that most are at? So that's going to have to be a conversation with each individual department head to assess where those part-time rates fall. So for instance, a highway laborer would be, so let's say highway laborer starting out is seventy percent of Gary Salami.
And I'm not asking that, I'm asking who's coming up with that number, are we getting that from the auditor's office, are we getting that from you?
I mean.
What's, what's the plan? So I know where I'm getting that number.
Yes, I mean, Laura will have the base numbers once she and Jenny update the matrix with the two point eight percent, and really you're just going to go two steps down in the matrix. Okay, yeah.
But, but it'll be, but it'll be effective on the first.
Yes. Chris, I can get that number to you this afternoon, based on what they're discussing. It's a little bit messier for your office because your matrix isn't consistent across the board with two and a half like the rest of them are, but. I can this afternoon. I can send that to you and Fred right. It'll be more, that I can tell you will be more than that. Salary matrix for this year. Yeah. Okay, sheriff's office. So right now.
No, that's all that I have on my list, so that's what I.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm guessing. I'll double check though and let you know for sure.
Okay. Yep. Correct.
We did not approve the CDC project coordinator at this time.
Correct.
There is nothing for assistant surveyor.
Correct.
We already approved in a previous meeting the auditor stipend.
Correct.
The part stipend next year is at zero because that was an odd year.
Correct.
The part-time part position is part-time, but what she gets is going to come out of perpetuation fund. The difference between what she gets now and full-time is out of perpetuation fund. Okay, the perpetuation fund is a separate fund. Who's paying for the benefits? That can come out of perpetuation.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I would say, you know, unless it makes it confusing having benefits come out of different funds. Okay. That was a conversation, this would not increase general fund, but.
Okay. EMA part-time stays at eight thousand, which it's had past probation, full-time office administration is no, that remains at part-time. EMA replacement of old truck was, was reduced to six thousand to, to repair the transmission. Okay. Maintenance director wages, so all matrix full-time wages stay at, as the matrix has said.
Correct.
So that includes the district's local coordinator.
Yes.
Okay, and part-time wages were addressed in a previous meeting.
Correct.
Community foundation fifteen thousand dollars stays in the budget at this point in time, but it could be addressed next week. Have I addressed everything? Have I understood it all?
Uh, then the assessor's aerial mapping and voting. Yeah, yeah, I would say forty thousand on advertising. Or marketing, yes, and then two point eight percent on the cost of living.
Okay. Now, do you want this matrix with the two point eight percent from this meeting to address it and is approved, or do you have to wait for a separate meeting and remember to approve it? We just have to have that matrix approved before the end of the year.
I mean, we, we set the, the rate, if we have it for next meeting, if you have time to do it for next meeting, I'm good with having it then and being ready to go.
And I also want you to know that you have to approve the Van Heeren Township budget, which I will send out to you, it's ready to go, it's much, much smaller than what the county's budget is. And the reason you have to approve this budget is because the Van Heeren Township Board is made up of three people, two of which serve on the volunteer fire department, and one is a direct relation to the trustee, so therefore, the Van Heeren Township Board cannot approve that budget, it has to come to council, and I suspect that this will be an ongoing thing for future years as well.
And we can wait on the salary matrix, they'll, they'll November one if, if you don't feel it'll be prepared. All right, any further discussion?
Lord, await. Okay.
And you, you as council can make that retroactive.
Yeah.
Time that she hired. I would assume that would do so.
Yeah, I would, definitely, so. All right. Any further discussion from the board? All right, we will adjourn our meeting for ten one twenty twenty-four.